But it buys us time and it's a good movement, but right. I mean, there's so much that's up to not go into work. You know, like two percent isn't plugging the hole.
No.
It's a figure and a sinking ship.
One time in a city. Sorry, United States.
I'll let Matt tell it to him. Said it opens.
Takes two Tango.
John's chair. It's in the fall.
Are you gonna come here?
Do you want your chair?
They call them back.
Does your chair okay? No, 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 that's this chair. Do you like this? Do you know either of those?
Oh, so you didn't. Which one's the back one?
I think I think I did.
Why don't you get one of the new ones?
Well, my first.
I guess I want that chair.
I wrote.
I know, I'm not gonna move back. I tried it once. I'm thrown off. Did it hurt? Do it.
Don't. Say this here. Actually, I've done a small. I've been doing several models.
Are you sure?
There was someone. I want me one more year to give. And there we go.
I have time to time, right?
And when I take my.
Going off.
I'm trying to like. Some steps going on. I need some steps. This one, this one, this one. This is the last. This one, this is. Stay away from this. It's too small. My brother's such a Nazi. This is what he does. And then I'm like. That's not fun. I can't get this. That's all it's something. I'm not getting it. Okay.
Have your attention please for the February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting. While the City Council might bring that to order. May we have roll call, please?
Jonathan McKay.
Here.
Michael Snar.
Here.
Bill Learman.
Here.
Bob Osborne.
Here.
Michael Albright.
Here.
Nick Eivlin.
Here.
And Matt Kirkie.
Here.
Would you stand and join me to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just join me in brief moment of silence. Thank you. Do you have before you the agenda for tonight? Are there any corrections or changes that may be made in the motion for approval?
We would be exempt from presentation.
Second. Motion second to accept the agenda as presented. All in favor, say a follow saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the meeting minutes of the February tenth meeting, special meeting. A wish and pleasure. Will they be accepted as presented?
Second.
Motion second to accept the February tenth meeting minutes as presented. All in favor, say a follow saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are accepted. We now have a public hearing for rezoning request from Health Source of Ohio. The rezoning of two parcels with a total area of zero point three five seven acres, more or less, more commonly known as one fifty-six and a half and one sixty-eight West Main Street from ET Downtown Transition to DC Downtown Core. Written public hearing to open. Are there any comments or presentation for this request? If so, please.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I'm Bob Willing, representing K-Cor architecture. Just to give a brief summary, Health Source had a current facility on a portion of the site. They were looking originally to expand their facility. As we developed to the design, we decided it would be in Health Source's interest to purchase the property next good. And I guess the the resuming issue came up that the parcels that Health Source bought were zoned downtown transitional. The part partial that Health Source currently sits on is downtown core. We met with the city and through just simple discussions, kind of determined that the because the parcel as it's consolidated needs to be zoned, the single zone, that the downtown core would be most appropriate. Quite honestly, would work best for Health Source. So that's the the zoning that was determined for the site. And my understanding is that this is kind of the final step to getting that approved. If there's any questions.
Anyone have questions, council members or anyone else? We do have a first reading on that coming up here under Mr. Kirk's section. Anything else? No other comments? I will close the public hearing. And that's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President. State of the city. I'd say pretty good. Probably all three. Pretty good. Despite many challenges faced by all of us in the second year of this pandemic, the city of Wilmington continues to make significant progress. While replacing critical aging infrastructure and navigating responsible new development, the city kept moving in the right direction, forward. We remain steadfast in spending responsibly while continuing our focus on safety services, code enforcement, and road improvements. City spending did not surpass city revenue. Our revenue has many different labels, funds, taxes, fees, and levies. Regardless of what we call it, it doesn't change the fact that these revenue streams are taxpayers' contributions to our community. I remain responsibly shepherding the budget and projects to match the trust given to us by our citizens and the needs of the community. This important work can only be accomplished with the support of City Council and the dedicated efforts performed by our city employees. A year ahead, we look forward to serving residents in a responsive and responsible manner that you have come to expect from all of us. Thank you. Next, I am swearing in. Bob Wilson. Bob? Did he change his mind?
It's funny because sometimes it makes somebody.
All right, Andrew, you play a little music and I'll be a little. What are you laughing about? Got to do the. I guess he doesn't.
Do you have the plaque though? Do you have Hamilton's plaque?
I'm swearing in.
Do you have Hamilton's plaque?
Hamilton's plaque, yeah.
You have it?
Yeah.
Okay. Say whichever officer shows up first.
Would you Matt first?
Yeah. Do you want to just wait?
Can we recognize?
We certainly can.
Should we wait for the officer to say? Should we wait for the officer?
They they don't know the situation downstairs.
Come on up, man. As you guys all know, this is one of my favorite things to do. Whenever one of our employees goes above and beyond, I'm just so proud of this guy. And I'm gonna read the the report to you. This was. This is Matt's report. I responded to TimberTech in response to a male subject that had his arm cut by a machine. The caller advised that they had a makeshift tourniquet on the subject's arm, but it was still bleeding. The only squad available was coming from Clarksville. I rushed to TimberTech and was directed where the subject was. I made contact with the subject, which had duct tape around his arm. I applied my tourniquet to his right arm, close to the armpit. The squad arrived and Patrolman Sylvester and myself quickly walked the subject to the squad before he passed out. I advised the squad the timeframe that the tourniquet was applied. The subject was transported to CMH. I then responded to CMH and the fire department members advised that it was a great job of applying the tourniquet. The tourniquet was contaminated and was not put back in service. I signed out for a new tourniquet from the supply closet. The contaminated tourniquet remained at CMH to be disposed of. The least we could do is replace your tourniquet. And this is the plaque that we're awarding. It says, "The city of Wilmington in recognition of Patrolman Matthew Hamilton for your distinguished service to the city of Wilmington on your actions of January sixteenth, twenty twenty-two."
Congratulations.
Thank you, Officer Hamilton.
Still waiting on. Sure welcome to the train. Well, let me read my other brags while we're waiting on. Oh, yeah. My other announcements. Lois Allen. Wintered Services today. What a sweet, precious lady. I did not know that she was Bowe Taylor's sister. And I thought I knew her. Did you know that, Dalton?
No, I didn't.
I did not. And I thought I knew her. Everybody. But that that one got by me. A few announcements. Murphy Theater presents the Hotel California Eagles Band on Saturday the nineteenth. That's this coming Saturday. Murphy Theater, call for tickets. Flint County Health District on Wednesday, twenty-third, one to four. Walk-in COVID flu vaccine clinic at Community Room, Flint County Annex Building. I just heard on news today that the country is now seventy-three percent vaccinated or immune. I think that should be herd mentality for us. Wilmington College Theater Play, February twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, seven thirty at the Hugh Highland Theater. They're presenting the Twelve Angry Jurors. Great, great play. Murphy Theater presents George Washington Carver and Friends, a matinee for youth. That's Saturday the twenty-sixth at two. Meatloaf Cook-Off, Saturday, February twenty-sixth at American Legion Post Forty-nine East Locust from six to seven thirty. The problem with that, you never eat meatloaf. You don't eat it at home because you know what's in it. You never eat it somewhere else because you don't know what's in it. But anyway, I wish.
Stand up, come on. You should.
I'll take your place and.
Cleveland Island Homeless Shelter, Soup to Go, Friday, March eleventh. One, eleven to one at three ninety West Main Street. I hope they still use Anne Mae's soup recipes. She made some outstanding soup. And now Sergeant Wilson. I was afraid you'd change your mind on me.
That's fine.
Come on, buddy, up here with me. It's a few. Introduce your wife.
My wife.
You're stealing my lines. Welcome, Mr. Wife. Could you write in, key after me? I, Bob Wilson. Do solemnly swear.
We solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the ordinances of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
And the ordinances of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all duties incumbent upon me.
And perform all duties incumbent upon me.
As a sergeant with the Police Department for the city of Wilmington.
As a sergeant with the Police Department for the city of Wilmington.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
Congratulations. Got it? We need to, we need to sign this and make it official. Chief.
Sir.
Your newest sergeant. I'm you, President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Order your vans.
Not doing this this time, Mr. President.
Safety Service Director, Mr. Shoddy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now the legislation under my portion of the agenda, but I have a very quick PowerPoint presentation. If it works this time, we'll see. There it is. So a lot of questions about, and I'm sure you guys have had a lot, you all, councils receive questions on Romback Avenue. So I thought we would play a little game tonight called True or False? Romback Avenue. Because there's things on Facebook and social media and people giving opinions. And there's a famous quote, I think you described this quote to me, that you're entitled to your own opinions, but not entitled to your own facts. Is that, I forget, it was a senator or something that said that. But that's, that's where this all comes from. So Romback Avenue, true or false? And believe it or not, this is something I've heard, this comes up a lot. People say the Romback Avenue project has been completed.
Pause.
We should have brought candy to pass out.
The Romback Avenue project's on pause during the winter season, as we've said multiple times. Construction activities will begin again in March, next month. So again, this is the new signals, the paving, all of that stuff is still yet to be seen. It's gonna happen starting next month. Did you have a quick, did you have a question? Oh, I see you raised your hand, I'm sorry.
No.
All right. We got more fun. You ready? The city is constructing a median as part of this project.
Pause.
There are no medians in this project. That is another thing I keep hearing over and over and over again. There are no medians as part of this project. Number three, the city constructed a median in front of Deborah Williams Park, across from Dairy Queen and Wendy's.
Pause.
The city constructed, and this is, we put it in bold, a pedestrian refuge island in front of the park. There was a request for a mid-block crosswalk from the park to the north side of Romback so the kids could get from the park to the fast speed restaurants. Crossing five lanes of traffic without a signal requires a two-stage crossing with a stopping point midway. That is something that is required when you're dealing with five lanes of traffic. It is not a median, it is a pedestrian cross, pedestrian refuge island that was requested in the beginning.
Brian.
You're emphasizing that.
That is a fact.
Brian, I do, I do have a question. That is required by ODOT, correct?
Yes.
ODOT.
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 Requires that.
They require that.
You cannot just lay down paint and build a crosswalk unsignalized in the middle of, in the middle of a block on five lanes of traffic.
Also a highway.
It is a highway, it is required by ODOT. It never would have worked without the, what they call pedestrian refuge island that was requested.
Okay, thank you. Brian?
I, I'm sorry, Nick, Mike, Michael raised his hand first.
Did you say who requested it, or is that public? Who requested the pedestrian refuge?
I, I believe there was more than one, and my memory is terrible, terrible.
No, I'll tell you, it was Kate Chamberlain.
Yes. But I remember Dairy Queen specifically requesting the crosswalk.
I was concerned about the children leaving the park, running across the street.
I'll go a step further, and they even, they even offered to pay for part of the pedestrian crosswalk. And the, we did not, we did not do that. We decided to do that on our own. So there was, they even, they even made an offer to chip in on a pedestrian crosswalk. They being Dairy Queen. So this was the conversation we had. Is there anything right? I'm not sure if there is or not, and whether they request it. But there were multiple people in the meeting, and they requested the pedestrian crosswalk. And this was the only way we could do it, was with the pedestrian refuge island.
This was also feedback in the public meetings.
Yes. So when we had public meetings, we had these surveys and stuff.
Fill it out, what do you want to see?
The list is.
They would say, I can't walk across the street from the park.
I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone repeating this over and over again, especially to those of you who are already on council during this whole process. Yes.
In the last City Services Committee meeting, I think Jonathan brought up a question. What kind of signalization is gonna be there in that crosswalk? Can you describe, is it overhead stuff? I mean, what kind of lighting or what do you, what do you, what do you plan for that?
So lots of signage, rapid beacon, what do they call it, the rapid?
When it's activated?
Yeah, RB something. I wish our engineer was here, but it's the, it's the light, I mean, you will see it. It's gonna be the flashing lights and stuff, it'll be activated with a button. And you will certainly know, I know that, you see it in Ziny.
Lebanon?
Lebanon, yeah.
Downtown Lebanon when you.
You won't miss it. So and again, back to number one, this isn't finished. So they see this island just sitting there in the middle of the road because it's not finished. It will have the signs, have the lights, it will have the whistles, all that stuff. All right, then this is the final one that I have on here. Because this is the one that drives me nuts, because we repeated this since the very beginning when we compromised and did not put the medians into the project. Left turnouts at unsignalized locations will be restricted.
True.
Thank you. Thank you. Because this is something we've been talking about since the very beginning, as far as safety. The primary goal of this whole project wasn't, was obviously new pavement, new signals and all that. But it was to prioritize the safety aspect of Romback Avenue along the corridor. Left turnouts at the unsignalized locations leads to severe injury, crashes. That's, that's the, that's why we got the money to begin with, was for safety reasons. Not because we wanted a pretty road with new lights on Romback Avenue. It's because we were able to justify the safety concerns on Romback Avenue. That's why this whole thing was built. That's why there's literally millions of dollars from the state and federal government to help fund this project, was for the safety concerns. And from day one, that was, that was our main goal, was to, to make it safer along the corridor, to make it more efficient along the corridor. And left turnout at unsignalized locations, from the beginning we said, we're going to be restricted. And that's something that is still part of this project. So when you're being confronted from, from people on Romback Avenue who sound like this is the first time they've heard it, it's not the first time they heard it. They, I can tell you right now, they were participating in every single one of those public hearings, meetings, private meetings within the mayor's office. They have heard this over and over again, that we were gonna restrict left hand, left turnouts on Romback Avenue.
We had business owners sitting right here in the gallery. They heard that and they concurred with it and said they would abide by it.
And I remember we were, yeah, downstairs, we had public hearings, we had tons of public hearings on this. So when you keep hearing this, and this is mostly for the New York members too. And Mr. Albright, I know you were on a lot of this, but when you hear this, this isn't it. This is something that's been debated for years, literally. So that is my presentation on Romback Avenue, because I'm hearing it. I'm sure you, you all are hearing it as well. Is that as clear as it can be? Is there any questions about that?
Just that it's rectangular, rapid, flashing beacon.
Thank you.
Because your engineer is stalking you online.
No.
He messaged me. Hi, Paul.
If I say hi, Paul.
A little creepy.
You know, the thing is, we all resist change. Change is something we have to deal with. That traffic pattern has not changed out there since nineteen eighty-five, when it became a five-lane highway. And now we're having to almost reinvent the wheel because we're gonna have all kinds of massive changes. And everybody just has to understand it's gonna be different in the future.
Right. Thank you.
It's not complicated.
Thank you. Any other question? Yes.
So if I can't turn left, then what do I do?
Turn right.
Turn right. I go down, turn around.
Just turn around.
We have a.
Yes. All right. And I, I was bringing this up just for an example. And this is not what we're doing, so I don't want to scare anybody. But like, if you're, if you're on thirty-five going around Ziny now, if you've noticed, they put wounds in on thirty-five with the U-turns and stuff like that. That's, that's what we were presenting originally, was something to that effect with wounds on thirty-five and the turnarounds with the signalization for that. They're doing it. And we're not. But that was the idea originally. So this is how, this is the trend, this is where it's going, this is where it's headed, this is the future, this is safety. It's, that's where it's headed, whether, whether you like or not. Again, I'll go back to my original statement. You can have your own opinion, but you can't have your own facts. And the facts are what they are as far as safety. They've done a lot of studies on these and the T-bone accidents and stuff. And this is where we're headed in the future across the country. So.
Fact.
Fact. Any questions?
That's true.
All right. I'm on my switch. I said I would do a quick heads up on, this is not Romback Avenue, but heads up on things that are coming, but not tonight, in the near future. Okay? And order your vans, please jump in. The first one is not on the agenda tonight, but as you know, we were recently reawarded the Clean Ohio Trails Fund Grant for the trail. And that's a five hundred thousand dollar grant that we didn't have, that we had, and we didn't have, and now we have. So we will need to expend the money before receiving any grant money. It's a reimbursement grant. This will require a five hundred thousand dollar supplemental. So you will see a five hundred thousand dollar supplemental soon, not tonight, but I just want to let you know it's because of the grant, it's reimbursable. And if I'm missing anything, order your vans, please jump in. Here's the other thing, for those of you that were here, this is Romback, that were here last year and may have last year. I indicated to all of you that we were gonna receive a bill probably in the following year, this year, to relocate those poles on Romback Avenue. And it would be substantial, it'd be over four hundred thousand dollars. I had, order your vans, it's been a long time, she had a report that night, and she talked about this is something we're gonna have in twenty twenty-two. I'm gonna put this away. We have reason to believe that the invoice will be coming soon. They basically said that the poles have been relocated. So the invoice is coming. We have not received the invoice yet, but when we receive it, you will be looking at a four hundred thousand dollar plus supplemental from the general fund for the fees to relocate the poles that I explained a year ago. So that's a heads up. This is it, final. Airborne Road Project. You know, we, we actually had really good bids on this. And with the, with the help of the Port Authority, you know, giving us the six twenty-nine funds. Thank you, Dan and Jennifer. We, our match on this is gonna be approximately nine hundred forty-one thousand dollars. Once the bids came in, we didn't, we didn't put that in the budget because we didn't know what the project was actually gonna sell for. That, this will require supplemental. This is coming. And I know that you probably wanted to talk about whether or not, because we had a lot of discussions about whether or not we were gonna pay cash for this, or we were gonna consider financing it. And so if you, if you, I'll turn it over. or we were going to consider financing it, and so if you, if you, I'll turn it over here to you.
When we get ready to do this supplemental, we'll have another little review of the general fund, and where I believe we can be. And it's just, it's very similar to what we ran into last year, when we needed the 1.8 million for Romback Avenue, and we found that we could do that with the current carryover revenues, excess revenues in the general fund, but I will give you a review like we had last fall, of where the general fund is. My opinion tonight, this week, is that we can do that for the general fund. We discussed issuing notes for road projects, or, you know, borrowing the money and then paying it back, but I'll give you that overview, so you can see where I'm coming from with that, before we go through with that supplemental. We'll probably be the same night, you can always change your mind, say we don't want to do it, have a finance committee meeting to discuss it, and what everyone should attend and, and talk about it, so it will be coming, but I believe it is a supplemental from the general fund to do this project with me.
Any questions about?
Not at all.
Right, okay. And then the last heads up that I have tonight, and this is actually, I mean, it's goodness, we, we are anticipating a lot of development in the city of Wilmington this year. Thank you. It's like a lot of development, a lot of, a lot of new construction going on, and it's going to require the city to have inspectors on site, to make sure that they, that it's complete to our specifications. These services will require supplemental preparation, I don't know what that is right now, because things are pretty, you know, it's not happening at this moment, but when things start to heat up, and, you know, I'm talking about timberland development, I'm talking about, there's a multitude of developments that are happening, that are going to happen. We need to have inspectors on site to make sure they're done to our specs. I want to make sure that, that they're done right. And so, that's something that will be coming in the near future as well, I just want to give you a heads up. So when I come in and say, we need inspectors to, to make sure that they're doing what they say they're going to do, that it's happening. So, that's all I have, Mr. President. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Schott, I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Patient with a little quiz.
You guys are 100% right, so thank you.
And you didn't even put on candy.
Council, Council Committee reports, City Revitalization Committee, Mr. McKay.
Uh, no report, Mr. President.
Thank you. City Services Committee, Mr. Evil.
We'll be having a committee meeting sometime between now and the next council meeting, that follow up to our previous City Services meeting, that was discussed there in any other words I care to bring up, but that's forthcoming, no legislation denied. And that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items this evening. Our first item is we have three reading on ordinance 2205, which is a lot of landfill notes. And the ordinance is nine or 10 pages. Honor Vance provided a great succinct document that should be in your package that summarizes everything that, or some people, some person's had it, so the committee had it, and there were a few other additional copies floating around, but that pretty much answered any questions I think the committee had, but if anyone from council has any specific questions about this, it's a removal and it's a third year.
And we'll do this, this time next year, again. Until it's paid off.
Seeing no questions, I move to give a first reading, only on ordinance 2205, by title only.
Second?
Motion by Albright, second by Snar, first reading ordinance 2205, all in favor, sit above us, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First read, please.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 1,550,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying at maturity, together with other lawfully available funds of the city, the city's outstanding Series 2021 landfill notes, and paying related lawful costs of issuance, authorizing a purchase agreement and registrar agreement, and declaring emergency.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations of the ordinance 2205, second and third reading by title only.
Second?
Motion second by the same individuals, roll call, please.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eiflin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
Seeing all in favor, second, third read, please.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 1,550,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying at maturity, together with other lawfully available funds of the city, the city's outstanding Series 2021 landfill notes, and paying related lawful costs of issuance, authorizing a purchase agreement and a registrar agreement, and declaring emergency.
I move to pass ordinance 2205, that's read.
Second?
Motion second for passing, throw call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eiflin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Thank you, ordinance 2205, passed.
And our second item is we have three readings on ordinance 2206, which is three small miscellaneous transfers, most of them pertaining to real estate tax items between different accounts. So, were there any questions on ordinance 2206? Seeing no questions, I move to give the first reading only on ordinance 2206 by title only.
Second?
Uh, motion by Albright, second by Osborne, first read ordinance 2206, all in favor, sit above us, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First read, please.
An ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations of the ordinance 2206, second and third read by title only.
Second?
Motion second by Osborne, over second, third read, ordinance 2206, roll call, please.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eiflin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Seeing all in favor, maybe have second, third read, please.
An ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
I move to pass ordinance 2206, that's read.
Second?
Motion second for passing to ordinance 2206, roll call, please.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eiflin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Thank you, ordinance 2206, passed.
We have no additional items, but it sounds like we'll be having a lot coming forward, so we can't wait, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Albright. Judiciary Committee, Mr. Perky.
Got a few things for us to discuss tonight.
Yes, sir.
Let's go ahead and get started. The first thing on our agenda tonight relates to the public hearing we had tonight, so we're asking for a first reading, changing the zoning of the parcels on West Main Street. So, if there wasn't any question or comments to be answered at the public hearing, whether there's anything that's come up since then, or any objections, or anything that anybody wants to add? Okay, I don't want to blow through without giving everybody a chance to speak in the meeting, so. Seeing no other comments, I move for the first reading ordinance 2207 by title only.
Second?
Motion by Perky, second by McKay, first read ordinance 2207, all in favor, sit above us, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Maybe have first read, please.
An ordinance changing the zoning of real property located on West Main Street in the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
Thank you, sir. And ask for the second reading in our next meeting, please. All right, so moving right along to item B. The next thing is, ordinance 2208, and this is a, an amendment to, or amending an ordinance to provide a cost of living adjustment to our employees, of 2%. I had a brief meeting yesterday with some of the administration, Mary Kay, and we kind of went through some of this. If you remember several years ago, when we did a cost of living adjustment, they did for, it was 2% over the course of several years, built in. When we were discussing this yesterday, I didn't, hadn't seen the legislation yet, and didn't realize it was multiple year. So, I was a little taken aback, because Mary Kay and I were talking money for it, it was like, you know, kind of discussing whether, how feasible it was. Obviously, we're all aware of the inflation's going on, we're all aware, I mean, if you're not aware, the city has, has had a substantial amount of turnover as of late, some of the, of all levels of the organization, so in some of them, we're just people that are looking for other, you know, you have to find a way to try to retain the people, so we were having a discussion about how to retain, you know, keeping up with the consumer price index, or inflation adjustment. I think, Mary, what was the percentage that was the adjustment for this year for?
Total?
4% total.
Total.
So, this would be, we're, we're talking about the employees got a 2% raise in January, and we're talking about an additional 2% cost of living adjustment now. I'm willing to discuss this, I don't, I don't know that this is, I think it's a good move for right now. I don't know that it's the only move that probably needs to happen. Greg's nodding, Greg and I haven't spoken yet, so.
Yeah.
I think that this is probably part of, of larger package. Because of that, it makes me a little apprehensive to start plugging in multiple-year cost of living adjustments. And there are options all over the board, from reclassification to, you know, dollar amount increases, to, I mean, there's bonuses, we've done a lot of different things in the past to try to help see employees and to recognize them for all their hard work, and the fact that, you know, our steps are front-loaded, we all know that, our, our pay scale is loaded in a way that some of the longer-time employees don't see as much adjustment, and they're working just as hard, if not harder, because they're more experienced, more knowledgeable, and in charge of more people usually, so outside of position changes, it can be hard to, to move those people up. So, I support the idea of this, but I wanted to discuss with council, I just, I think it might be a little bit more, it might be a little bit more forward-thinking to only make a year adjustment, you know, current adjustment right now, not to program in front of years. That said, if we were to do this for multiple years, anything that happens in the future would likely rescind them, so I'm kind of reaching out to the council here to see what you think is right. Brent, what was your, would it be feasible for us just to amend it, as, and then do a reading tonight, or?
Are you, are you, you mean to just make it 2023?
Yeah, just make it, no.
2022.
2022.
2022.
Yeah, this is current, I mean.
We're just doing the first reading? Okay.
So, the, we're able to do whatever we need to do and still get a first reading in tonight, so what are your thoughts? Not everybody wants. Okay. Seeing none. It, it is a tough thing to talk about, obviously. Inflation is out of control right now, there's no sign of that immediately being changed. We know that retention is a problem for small municipalities always, even more so when times are difficult like, like they are right now. So I think it, my first concern when I sat down with Mary and Brian and Mary Kay yesterday was, is it enough? You know, and it, we know that it's not, but it, kind of what Greg and I were talking about, or what we were alluding to earlier, is it's probably part, this is the first step of more things to potentially come down the pike. From where I said I think it's a necessary thing to do, I'd love to push forward first reading, but if there's, my, my intention is to just do this for one year, unless I see any pushback from anyone else, I mean. Okay, so if there's no other discussion, anyone in the audience, anybody have, anyone else up here have any comments, anything like that? And Mary Kay, I talk numbers a lot, so I don't want to take that off the table, if that's, it's a, it's a big ask, but it's more than necessary, and what do we decide on half this as enterprise?
A little bit less than half of the in, the overall increase for one year are the enterprise funds, meaning water, sewer, and landfill. So, the overall cost to the city for 2022, and this does not take into consideration steps, people who have steps along the year, I'm just taking the raw data, what was budgeted for salaries, and multiplying it times 2% without getting fancy. And we're talking possibly about $130,000. But a little less than half of that are the enterprise funds. I think that is skewed a bit by our taxi fund, because this pay plan only recognizes full-time employees who are on that pay plan. So me using their full salaries does not rec, because we already compensated and done a compensation for the taxi department, for those drivers. I've already done that, so that number's skewed by that a little bit, because I just grabbed the raw data for, for those, so it's not quite that much. I don't have any opposition to rewarding our employees whatsoever, and I said that when we were in discussion the other day. We always have to remember, if you're going to do it for multiple years, that you've thought it through, because it's, it rolls on top, and on top, and on top again, and things could change, maybe you want to give them more, but there, there are a lot of options there, but I am also not telling you not to do it for multiple years, but it's not something, and I very quickly tried to do the numbers once we got the legislation, to, to see what that does to the bottom line. It's not a lot, it's not a huge amount of money, but it is, when we have projects like we have in the general fund, and in the wastewater treatment plan, as we're doing the new plant, there, there, every little ditch affects the bottom line, and we always just want to be cognizant of that.
I, I think the, thank you, I always appreciate the, the real, my, my own feelings aside as I've had Mary Kay, the reality, the numbers. If, if I thought for a second, or Greg, or Mary, or Brian, or anybody had said this, you know, this 2%, this is the bullet, everybody's going to be happy when this is done, I would buy all means, four years, right? But knowing that it's just the first step of things to come, I think it's probably better for us not to put ourselves into an ordinance that's going to guarantee, because we'll have to budget those long-term, and things may change, and who knows? It's a really turbulent situation we're in right now, and we, I think everyone acknowledges that we need to, to figure out the right way to do more and move forward, but I don't know that banking at a 2% for multiple years is the right one. Yes, sir.
Is this for all employees, or are we excluding bargaining units?
It's excluding, I believe it excludes bargaining.
Is there going to be a conversation with the bargaining units to have an opportunity as well, or the police, fire, and dispatcher just kind of out to the side with it?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
This just matches what the, this is competitive to what the, this is competitive or comparable to what the collective bargaining units negotiated, just.
So where is that from? So where is that from?
It's on, it's just the, it's the.
City pay plan?
City pay plan.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because the, the unions have their own pay plan within their contracts, so.
Yes.
Matt, was there, I'd go back to something you said earlier, was there a discussion with, with you and the administration, anybody about perhaps indexing this to CPI or something like that, rather than going with a, a set 2% variable?
I'm not in this discussion, but we, the, if you didn't hear, the, the question was, was there a discussion about, you know, tying, tying in compensation increases to CPI, or one of the accepted standards of, you know, inflation? And we didn't discuss that this time, and we know we've discussed it on council in the past.
Administration has discussed.
Administration has.
But if it's automatically legislated, and it, Mayor's stand forth can contribute whatever, I don't want to speak on his behalf, but the concern would be, if inflation hits 15%, there's no way we can absorb as a city that quickly. but the concern would be if inflation hits fifteen percent, there's no way we can absorb as a city that quickly.
Yes, that's, was my concern. I guess in asking the question, and I, I concur with your thoughts on, on keeping the duration short as possible for that very reason.
Yeah, because, because it doesn't.
We just don't know what it's going to do, yeah.
I get, I don't, and maybe, I hope I said this right. My concern isn't, it's, it's not for one side or the other. I think it's, and it's smart to keep it low because we don't know how things are going, not to prevent us from having those costs in the future, but yeah, it is, it's volatile. So any other questions?
How much should three percent be approximate?
Fifty percent or?
About two percent.
Uh, approximately with a hundred and seventy some thousand.
Sounds great, but.
Yeah. So, alright, if there's no other discussion, I think I'd like to move to uh, uh, I'm, I'm going to do a movement to a, or you just want to do it after first reading, Brent? I'm asking your legal opinion.
See, there's qualitative difference between these two. I mean, I would almost suggest that this not come like, make a motion until second to come to reading and we just start with the revised one. I mean, that's just my, just.
I, I feel like everybody up here feels the same way, and if I'm an employee, I don't want to feel like I, if there's time being wasted on procedure if it doesn't need to be.
Like you say, we do it, we just do it a different way. Is that correct?
Well, it, it's qualitatively different. We want to do it as amended for the first reading, correct?
Yeah.
Only issue is, I guess, this could change, like, I guess the old sections, the sections will be modified.
It's, it's a big edit, so.
It's a big edit.
It's a big edit.
Like, we can do it. Uh, and if you want to do it for the sense of just showing, you know, then it's fine. Um, those amendments, I mean, people, nobody up here can really say that section four is now going to say this, section five.
Correct.
Is now going to say this. It's qualitative change. It might be best maybe to do the first and second readings next time, with the subsequent changes included.
I'd be okay with that. Um, council, what do you think? I mean, the plane, the plane wants to do it as three readings, but I don't want to drag it out either to, to make.
All three readings.
So I think the consensus here would be to.
This was just out of first reading.
It was just out of the first reading.
Yeah, so the consensus would be to take it and fix it, and then at the next meeting we can do a first and second reading. And that will keep us on schedule with.
It's just going to.
Yeah, so it will have the two things between now and the next meeting to amend it properly, and then we can come back and do a first and second at the next meeting. And like I said, that still keeps us on schedule.
Hey, you just exhibit, eliminate three exhibits?
If you just amended to do only exhibit A and remove B, C, and D.
Strike exhibit B, C, and D.
In sections three through.
Yes.
Of the ordinance.
We're striking out completely. Modifying the term of the title to just.
You can just amend it and have a.
Twenty twenty-two.
For your second reading, you can have a clean version.
Okay, here we go. We're in.
So yeah, we can do this amended.
So.
We're striking out the uh,
Okay, so.
The coming years and those, those portions. And now, since it's amending to the extent that it's just being cut out, I think that's easier for the most of the time. And it's not like we have to remodulate, so it's up to you guys.
Sections.
That way you have free readings, but then you could also just.
Read through.
I don't, I don't think we want to get into all the nomenclature. We just say, you know, two thousand twenty-two. And then everything that applies to that in, in the legislature. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
This is retroactive, so.
No.
No.
No, no retroactive.
It's effective.
Don't worry, Mary Kay, I got you.
It's effective. It is effective the first of the pay period following the signature of, yes, passage, you're correct.
After passage.
You know what you're doing, Matt?
Yeah, at that point, at this point, I'm going to not move this forward, and it'll give us two weeks. I think we all agree on the intentionality. Uh, I think we all know what we want to do here, but I'm not comfortable going forward with a lot of question marks on it, and I don't want to procedurally do it.
So, so you should move postpone.
I'm going to move to postpone ordinance, the first reading on ordinance 2208.
Second, but we're going to do it in three readings next time then, so they don't miss a pay period, right?
Well, I think we do it to two and then one.
First and second.
Yeah.
Okay, I just don't want employees to miss a pay period on it.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion on the floor to postpone.
My second.
And we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
So the first reading, excuse me, the ordinance is postponed.
Thank you, everybody. I know that's a, got a little off the rails there, but I appreciate it. I was.
Thank you.
Uh, item number C on the agenda tonight is ordinance 2209. This is the, uh, it's creating the tip district for our property and to overlay with the CRA. We have Dan and Jennifer from the Board of Economic Development Team here tonight. Dan gave us a nice little synopsis at the, at the judiciary committee meeting tonight. Uh, the, the gist of it is that, um, this is the same project that we talked about months ago that council kind of threw its support behind. We get a motion of support. Uh, we've done all the due diligence now, we're finally ready to move forward with it, so. Does anyone need any clarification, or is everybody kind of clear on how this works, or do we need to? I'm happy to have Dan or Jennifer discuss. But if everybody's heard this a hundred times, I don't want to belabor the point either, so. Any questions or comments about it? No? Okay, well, that surprised me. Uh, it's just, we've, we've been dealing with this for so long, man. It's never been easy. Um, so I'll move for the first reading of, uh, ordinance 2209 by title only.
Second.
Have a motion second. I know, uh, Mr. Osborne will be abstained on this as that current husband's role. So we have a motion second for first reading ordinance 2209. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading please.
An ordinance declaring the improvement of certain parcel of real property to be a public purpose, creating an incentive district tip, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating specific public infrastructure improvements made, to be made or in the process of being made that directly benefit, or that once made will directly benefit, the parcel from which improvement is declared to be a public purpose. Requiring in annual service payments in lieu of taxes, providing related authorizations pursuant to Ohio Revised Code sections five seven zero nine point four zero C, five seven zero nine point four two, five seven zero nine point four three, five seven zero nine point eight three two, and five seven zero nine point eight five, and declaring an emergency.
Let the record show that Mr. Osborne abstained.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll ask for the second reading in our next meeting, please. Brent needs a break. The last thing on our agenda tonight is, uh, item number D is ordinance 2210. Has everyone had a chance to look at this? Uh, it is open enrollment period right now for our employees, so as they roll into that period, there, uh, we found some of our legislation that was not in keeping with the program that we're administering. So if you have a chance to look at the legislation, there's a few changes that are highlighted in bold. Uh, in one thirty-three dot one two, section B, uh, the first one says the city shall pay the premium for group life insurance coverage insurance. In the fixed amount of twenty-two, or twenty thousand dollars, we changed that from above to up to twenty thousand dollars.
At least.
At least twenty thousand.
Our says up to.
It's supposed to be at least.
At least.
That was a typo.
Okay, typo I can deal with. The, uh, item C says the city may pay the premium for the family plan instead of shall. Okay, we got that. Good. Those are the only two corrections. So are there any questions there? I mean, this is a, I hate the word housekeeping, but just bringing our ordinance in line with the plan as we're administering, so. If there are none, I'll, uh, let's see, I should probably move to amend the word up to, to, what was it, what's it?
At least.
At least. So move to amend, uh, section B from amount up to to amount, amount at least twenty thousand dollars. And with that, I'll move for first reading, uh, ordinance 2210 by title only.
Second.
Okay.
Have a motion by Perky, second by Albright, uh, first reading ordinance 2210 as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First read, please.
An ordinance amending section one thirty-three point one two, payment of hospitalization, group life insurance, and dental insurance premiums of the Wilmington codified ordinances and declaring emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and regulations and give ordinance 2210 a second, third reading as amended.
Second.
Motion second, uh, for suspension of rules. Roll call please.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Motion passes. May we have second, third reading, please?
An ordinance amending section one thirty-three point one two, payment of hospitalization, group life insurance, and dental insurance premiums of the Wilmington codified ordinances and declaring emergency.
Thank you. Um, move to, uh, pass amended ordinance 2210. As red.
Second.
Motion second for passage, ordinance 2210 as amended. Uh, roll call please.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Ordinance 2210 passes.
Yay, thank you. That's, believe it or not, that's all I have for this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Perky. Appreciate it.
We will clean up that stuff for next meeting and get it in there.
Uh, Public Works Enterprise Committee, Mr. Snar.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. You have before you, uh, the Audrey Treacher's report. What is your pleasure?
Move to be accepted, President.
Second.
Motion second to approve the Audrey Treacher's report as it's, as presented. Excuse me. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The report is accepted. Now, uh, we have the meeting to the public. Anyone would like to address council, please come forward. State your name and address as soon as you can, in confidence as brief as possible. Or anyone else who shouts to the listeners to the address.
Uh, Mr. President, I, uh, as many of you saw this week, I wrote something that happened twenty-five years ago in this community. And, um, I've been going around thanking those officers, and chief, I want to give a huge shout out to our department during that time. That was a very difficult time in our county, and the Wilmington Police Department performed magnificently. Uh, and we had an officer in the line of duty that was very close to not going to that, and so they need to be remembered for what they did twenty-five years ago in our community. And if you don't know what I'm talking about, it's the Kino shootout that, that happened, um, that I wrote about this week. So I, I just, I wanted to bring that up because a lot of people deserve a lot of thanks, and I know Mayor, or Nick, you were mayor then. You remember it well. Um, you gave a lot of correction along with some others, but, uh, but it was a very difficult time in our community, and those officers need to be remembered. So that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, uh, we do have an executive session on our agenda. Uh, password, we have a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, uh, section one twenty-one dot two two, uh, T subsegment eight, we move to adjourn to executive session. Related to marketing plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, personal financial statements, that kind of.
Have a second?
Second.
A motion, uh, by Perky, second. Uh, Lierman, to adjourn to executive session. Uh, may we have roll call?
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lierman? Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Motion to approve, move into executive session. Uh, like, we're obviously the fourth ability to be here, y'all are members of the administration. Anyone else? And there's not going to be any legislation to come out of this discussion. Alright, uh.
No offense.
Anything to suggest, obviously, say it's an executive session?
Hold on. I can't, yeah, bye, Sam.